All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the caucus of the Lackawanna City Council for our March 27, 2023, our regular council meeting. The caucus, I would remind everyone, is used as an opportunity for the council members to have a discussion amongst ourselves relative to each of the agenda items and, of course, ask any of the department heads who's ever present in the event that there's a clarification or any questions that may be associated with the individual agenda items. And to that end, we'll start. The initial items are administrative up until Department on over reports one and two. So we'll move to the next item, number three, from our city attorney. Request city council approve attached contract between city and university emergency medical services. Full contract is available at the city clerk's office. And our director of public safety, Director Wolf, would you give us and the public some background on this item? I don't think we've run into this for some time.
Yes. So prior to now, the fire department runs under a license of a doctor, a certified Dr. M.D., and that is to purchase any prescription medicine, Narcan, EpiPens, anything. It's a state requirement that they have to be under a doctor's license. Prior to now, the doctor that we were using did not charge us at all. Now he is retired, a new doctor has come on, and there is a charge. I can tell you, the fee is minimal compared to other municipalities. The city of Buffalo hired a doc, has to hire their doctor for their fire department, pays them, I believe, $150,000 a year. This is going to be $1,250 a year. And I don't know if Rick has anything more on that, or if we have to.
Very eloquently.
You like that?
Yes.
And I practiced in the mirror before I got.
That's the way the chief of, the fire chief explained it to me. Prior doctor retired, unfortunately. Licensing requirement requires that we have a physician involved in the prescription part of it. And this is the cost for, I believe this physician is associated with Kaleida or somewhere. And I've reviewed the contract, and this is what the chief told me, this is probably the best deal we're gonna get.
And just two things regarding the contract, Rick. The party that the doctor is gonna be dealing with is not the city of Lackawanna, but it's actually the Lackawanna Fire Department, because it shows them as the second party. So I had some question as to.
Yeah, I mean, it's still a part of the city, but it's that division.
Yeah.
He's gonna be an independent contractor for the.
Right. For the city, actually.
He'd be an independent contractor, so alleviates the problem of an employee and the benefits. The other question I had was, it's a $5,000 upfront payment, and I think it's $1,200 a month, but the $5,000 payment is gonna be for five months?
Yes, until the end of this fiscal year for the end of January.
Right. It's a partial payment to cover the rest of this year, and then it'll be an annual payment, correct?
Yeah, I see. Okay.
I believe $15,000 a year is the number.
Right.
I believe so.
Well, I believe this contract just covers till the end of this year, correct?
Just until July.
Yep. Yeah. So come January, we will probably have a new contract for you.
All right. August first, yeah. Any council members have questions?
Yeah, will that be in the fire department's budget or?
That's who we're gonna, yeah. During the budget session, we're gonna be coming up with, Jim's gonna be putting that in. Thank you for that.
That's for EMS.
Correct.
And overseeing that and, you know, suggest training, education, but yeah.
Well, some of the money is for grant writer, too, right? Some of the money is for grant writer?
Yeah, that $7,000 that's being transferred, $2,000 for the grant writer for the.
Some of there coming up.
For the safer grant and other things.
Nice. Okay, then. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Rick and John, for that clarification. Moving on, item number four, from our city attorney, request council to the attached ordinance authorizing the sale of the 2.13 acres on 2019 Abbott Road. I believe Mr. Spira is the one who expressed an interest, or had been other people who expressed an interest, but apparently his proposal was the most attractive. Anyone have any questions on item number four? Do you have anything you wanna add?
Yeah, so just in terms of transparency, we've received three offers on the property. As you know, Mr. Spira had made an initial offer, I believe, of about $33,000 for the entire parcel. We since divided a small portion for the homeowners that live toward the end of the block, and that left a 2.13 acre parcel. We then put that out to sealed bid. It was, they were opened, I was actually out of town at the time, but I believe the mayor, Mr. Di Pasquale, and.
In our public information, I think, Chuck Clark.
Yeah, opened those, they were sealed bids. Mr. Spira was actually the second bid, but the first party wants, he's got a concrete business, so we didn't think it was really conducive to that area. We're working with that gentleman now, and we're gonna do whatever we can for him along Alliance Drive, and that'll be before the council, hopefully relatively soon. So we'll keep, hopefully keep that business in Lackawanna. And then we went to the second highest bid, which was Mr. Spira, and he's proposing a storage facility. And so we're asking you to approve the sale subject to planning board approval, et cetera.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any members of the council have any questions on item number four?
I'm just curious, do you recall what the third bidder's plans were? Were there plans or just?
They were, I believe they were similar to Mr. Spira's, but their offer was substantially lower, yeah.
Anyone else? Right, moving on to item number five, from our city clerk. As per established council policy, all table items not acted upon within 90 days are deemed null and void and are to be resubmitted to the city council to be received and filed. And our city clerk submitted an item from November 7, 2022, regarding the sale of 2019 Abbott Road, Jason Spira, that due to our city attorney just mentioned.
Right, so this was his original offer for the entire parcel.
Any members have any questions on that item? If not, moving on to item number six, again, from our city clerk requesting the approval of hiring Holly Ann Lor at 53 Theresa Drive as a bingo inspector. Anyone have any questions or comments on item number six? Now, moving on to item number seven, our director of recreation, Brian Laxo, requests approval of the attached bid and award for the 2023 grass cutting and landscaping bid to Snowclaw Dr. 180 Lehigh, Lackawanna, and gives a breakdown of the cost per cut for ward. Any council members have any questions or comments on that item? Brian, do you know how long it's been since the city stopped doing arrow cutting?
I've been in this position for the last four years, and I've had to go through this process each year, so I can't speak to what the practice was prior to that. I know there were a few years where there were, there was bidding on, not by ward by ward, but literally plot by plot. I don't know what the case was before that.
So I know Tony's not here, but I think this is really, this is for additional work that the city may need. I know our DPW workers do do some grass cutting, but I think this is for, this isn't for one specific project, correct?
Well, there are specific mowing areas within each ward.
Right.
And that encompasses the entirety of the work for each ward.
Right.
But like Memorial Field.
Right.
The stadium, the playgrounds.
Right. I think this is to help us during the summer for those areas or for that work, which is above and beyond what our current work staff is capable of. Because we don't have the numbers as far as the work staff is concerned.
Right.
By May, the city quit cutting grass a while ago, and the contract got out.
Again, I can only speak through the last four years, plus a few years before. Yeah, it's been some time.
It's only been nine or 10 years, maybe. And the city cuts lots, they have a big brush hog and that, I don't think they cut them all back anymore than that. They don't even cut the senior center anymore. They used to cut over there, but. Right, Brian?
Again, I can't go back more than.
No, I'm not going on, I'm talking about now.
Well, yeah.
Last year, yeah.
I can tell you about what my guy that I contracted, what he cuts. Anything else, you'd have to talk to Tony DeSantis. I don't know what the day-to-day average, what their maintenance is. I really couldn't speak to that.
So, Brian, if you know, are they responsible of doing any of the sides along the premises? Because that seems to be the biggest problem visually, the aesthetics of the parks, even though the grass will be mowed, the hedges and the degree that accumulate amongst the shrubs along the.
At playgrounds and parks themselves, is that what you're representing?
Yeah.
That, I don't know that I could give you a direct answer. I know if Tony DeSantis were here, he'd have a much better idea of what his crew does. I know for a few of the playgrounds, he's had his crew come out and do that kind of edging work.
So as far as snow doctor, snowclaw doctor there, there's certainly just the grass to go.
As far as I know, again, I have looked into the specifics of it, because whatever they don't do, the barns has picked up the slack, and Tony could speak to the specificity of what their duties are much more accurately than I could.
And it shows, Brian. I'm so proud of that.
Thanks.
If you explain what that word means.
No.
Okay, anyone else? All right, if not, then moving on to item number eight, from our city controller, Linda. She's pressed city council review attached letter and directive development approving attached ordinance funding splash pad capital project. Any council members, council member, any second ward, this is your ward?
Yeah, I got a question. As far as the grants, where is that? In the general fund or capital fund or?
It's all paid first and then get reimbursed. So as we spend it, then we can request reimbursement.
You're looking today, the whole money out of the general fund.
Yes.
And the money is available. All these grants.
The grants aren't paid to us upfront. It's a promise, correct?
We have agreements on every single grant.
On every one of these grants, right. Is there, I haven't seen an actual drawing of those. I'm just glad I've got this.
That would be Lauren.
It's a secret.
That would seem to be a very well-covered fee.
Do we have the revised plans for the new one on Franklin Street?
I don't have those yet unless the contractor who is going to do the mechanical room already has them, and that could be the case, but I don't have the final plans just yet.
Who is that?
Actually.
CNS.
CNS.
CNS Companies is the engineer that was, is a selected consultant, actually, they're technically called, who is performing the final design and the work.
Oh, they're actually doing the work, too?
No, 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 no.
They're doing the design and preparing, doing like site prep. The contractor who will be doing the mechanical room, you know, that's a different contractor, so there's kind of a couple of people involved, a couple of parties.
Okay. And what's the name of that, that Galbo?
Correct, yes.
You're gonna be doing the basketball court?
And the mechanical room, as far as I'm concerned, which is gonna go first.
Has any of this equipment been ordered?
Yes.
And it's been paid for already?
In process, but yes. It's been ordered since actually the beginning of December.
Who ordered it?
Tom had to be the one to order it.
Or in the.
Correct, yes.
So we don't know what the scene looks like, or we?
So let's back up. As soon as, if you recall, the original splash pad was supposed to go on Ridge Road. It then got moved to Franklin Street. As soon as the revised plans have been completed, I think what you, you wanted to see a copy of those. Okay.
In addition to that, my question is, I don't mean to interrupt you, Carl. Did the council approve CNS or whatever it was?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you know when that actually?
It was with Mr. Stanton back in, he did, you authorized him to do a request, he did a request for proposal, CNS came in as the little bidder, and then that was approved. I do have, I'd have to dig it out, but it was, it predates Lauren, so.
And the contractor who's gonna do the work?
So the scope of the work for CNS was to design the splash pad and to assist the city in putting together a bid spec for the project and to oversee it in a limited capacity. But from what I understand, with the revised, with the move to Franklin Street, now the CNS is completing the revised plans, and I think what they're gonna do is, instead of doing the bid, because it will take longer now, and we want to get this done as soon as possible, we want to get it done this year, we're gonna go off the county contract, county, there's, the state has approved a list of contractors, so you don't have to, you can avoid the competitive bidding. So we've already selected a contractor, and I believe they're gonna, you know, whatever they're doing under that, I don't know the exact specifics, maybe Lauren can explain that, but I understand there's a building, there's a splash pad, and then there's a, what is it, a washroom or a storage building?
Mechanical room, bathrooms and utilities in there.
Yeah. So.
Lauren, yourself, you didn't sign any contracts for that? I mean, the city did that with the council.
To select CNS? Yeah, that was before my time.
Yes, and if you want, I will, I'll get the paperwork to you if you want it, or Lauren and I will work on it if you're willing to see that.
So has CNS been getting paid for their work right along?
So CNS submitted invoices, they were reviewed with the controller, they've submitted some additional documentation, and I think we're at a point now where we can actually pay them.
Oh, they haven't been, nobody's been.
I don't know, have they been paid?
There's been a portion of their work that was for the memorial site.
Right.
That.
It's been incurred and it's going to be paid.
Because that site was excluded from the project, it didn't qualify under any of the grants. So we had to pay those out of Lauren's consulting contract line.
How much was that?
I think it was about $29,000. And that dated back to 2021, and we just received the invoices. I think they maybe got lost in transition between Mr. Stanton leaving and Lauren coming on board.
And I believe the major reason behind it is the memorial area, or Memorial Field, I'll call it, it turned out to be non-conducive to excavation.
Right.
Yeah, so.
We were aware that they needed to relocate it.
We do have about $49,000 in expenses from CNS for the new site, but we haven't been able to pay them yet. We're waiting for approval from one of the grants. They've been submitted for reimbursement under one grant, and they have to be approved before we can pay them.
So those are the only two companies involved in this project, CNS and Galbo?
Well, no. There's equipment that's been ordered through a third company, a supplier of the equipment, correct?
There's two companies that.
To date, so I guess your question is, to date, you know, is that what your question is? Yeah, to date, there's really three companies. CNS, Galbo, and now.
Vortex/Meracle, which is where the equipment is being ordered from.
Right.
And the reason we did that was because Vortex and Miracle, it expedited the process because Vortex and Miracle are on the state, like the state contract list, which allowed us to, you know, not have to go out to bid, which would added, would have added a lot more time to this.
I agree with your project, all right.
Yeah.
When are we starting?
Well, we are waiting for final design. That should be any day now. And as far as I know, the mechanical room will be, will be going up first. So, you know, once the final, or once the mechanical room design gets to Galbo, they'll let us know, okay, this is when we're, you know, breaking ground.
And the basketball court, is that part of?
It's not part of like the splash pad project that I know of.
Okay, that was part of Brian's, too, right?
Yes, that was part of our plan to utilize the American Relief Fund, I can't remember if I'm referencing that, thank you, ARPA. That was part of the plan to renovate three basketball courts and begin a new build at that location. I'm not certain whether that court is going to go in prior to construction of the splash pad or afterwards. Apparently, there's been some discussion with the engineering company about that, so I'm really not certain when that's gonna begin, but that's a separate entity.
It's my understanding Galbo's involved in that, correct?
Right, they did the other three last year.
Yeah. I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
In looking at the budget for this year, the amount of money allocated for that project was in the neighborhood of $900,000. The project that, as we're looking at it today, is now almost 1.5 million. I know that the 99% of that is covered by grant monies, but what was, what caused such a significant jump in the cost of this project?
Well, I think it was, you know, the time, I think it's inflation. I can't really, I can't really give you an exact, you know, reason why, but the, yeah, the budgets that I've had are, you know, they actually have always been above $1 million since I've been here. So I'm not certain, you know, what it was prior, but I believe it's just kind of inflation, materials, supply and labor.
I'd like to know what that, what the cause is. Secondly.
We can get, yeah, we can get that.
Yeah, we can get to the bottom of that. Secondly, do the grant specifications allow for us to pull a contractor off of the county bidding list versus going to like an RFP or a public bid? Does the specs allow us to do that?
Yes.
Okay, so that's already been checked out.
So can I just add to that? From what I understand, most of the grants, and maybe Lauren has some more information on this, or Linda, but most of the grants require that you either do competitive bidding or you come off an approved list through the state or county. But they also require that you use, to some extent, a percentage of minority and, I'll call women, but women minority. There are some minority requirements, and from what I understand, with the current project and with CNS now involved and what they're doing on Franklin Street, and Lauren might be able to tell you this, but a substantial portion of this project is now going to be completed by either minority-owned or women-owned businesses.
As they must.
So we'll be in compliance, yes.
Well, I had a narrow on the time of completion, finding those niche.
We've already found them.
You've already found them. Okay, so I know we've been talking about the splash pad for, way before myself and Lauren, and it's frustrating, to say the least. It seems like when we start talking about splash pad, it's as if it's a new endeavor that we've never seen before, and we're constantly looking for answers. And quite frankly, I wanted to see this project done, and it hasn't even broken ground yet. If this is passed today, what is the ideal time, if you guys know, of when the shovels hit the turf?
I don't know when the shovel will hit the turf. What I've been told was equipment, I mean, even the equipment which was ordered in December, the dates that we're getting for it to be, for it to arrive here is July, August, September. So like, even that's very vague, so.
And this is Vortex/Meracle that purchased, or that ordered those items?
Via a supplier, yes. But that's the company that we are using in order to, you know, eliminate the need for, to have to go to, or request for.
So we're basically at the mercy of these companies and their equipment being delivered?
Yeah, they're kind of, I think, at the mercy of supply chain issues, you know, COVID and stuff, so.
If I can just add one small thing, I, the scope of this project is massive compared to what I've dealt with, but even on a small scale, getting replacement slides for playground equipment has gone from being like a two-month turnaround to like a nine-month turnaround. Like, I would call my supplier, and they say, well, it's coming from Kansas, and it left there two months ago, and it's in North Carolina, and we don't know when it's getting out of there. And that's, that's for a slide.
Right.
You know, and so the scope of this.
This has been since, what, four, four years ago, five years ago?
I get it, I'm just trying to say that the supply line, it's, it's out of our hands, and it's out of control at the same time. I just wanted to add that.
Once equipment arrives, is every, are all the dubs in a row for it to just start moving? Or are we gonna revisit this and say, oh, we have all these other questions, or all this ambiguity that we have no idea what we're doing here? And it's really, really embarrassing when a splash pad takes this long. We're not building valuable tower, we're putting drainage in the ground, and I mean, it's, I, I'm sorry for going on like that.
Right, I understand.
But this is the, this is the feedback that we get from the residents, and we're the first person, we're the first point for their frustration, and they have every right to be frustrated, because they've been promised this thing. If this was a surprise that they didn't know about, they wouldn't, you know, they wouldn't have so much frustration built up. So we keep telling them, it's coming, it's coming, but you know what, there comes a time where we just have to tell them, you know what? I don't know if it's ever gonna come to life. Because of the time that it's taken to get this far, the money seems to be there, but then it's not there because these grants have to be reimbursed. Is that, is there gonna be a possibility where they say that they're not gonna fulfill those? I know you say that they're negotiated already, but has there ever been a time where those don't come to fruition?
Well, we have agreements.
And the agreements are legally filed.
Yep, so those are binding, okay.
Yes.
Okay, I have hopefully a final question on this. Once the splash pad is completed, what is the yearly maintenance that has to be done on this to keep it up and running? And how much is it gonna cost the city to keep it up and running every year?
That is a question that I wish Tony was here for, because I know he's been, you know, in those conversations.
Well, I've asked this question a long time ago, and I haven't gotten an answer. So whether Tony was here or not, I don't know if anybody put pencil or paper, and I think we need to know what that.
Sure.
Amount is, because that could be significant. I mean, we're, look, we're being asked to transfer $4,000,400 from our general fund today for just the equipment, and yet nobody's put pencil or paper as to who's gonna maintain this park, what it's gonna cost, and what the details are. I mean, I think that's pretty significant.
I can definitely get you, you know, the actual numbers.
So somebody did put pencil or paper on this?
It's been discussed, and I don't want to say anything that, you know, will turn out to be incorrect, but I believe it's kind of minimal. I think Tony is doing a little bit of work on it in the DPW, maybe perhaps like just shutting it off and on.
Well, the water's gotta be tested, correct?
Yes, but I believe it's soaked in.
My understanding of it is it's not any kind of standing water, this is, it's gonna operate, and this is.
Yeah.
Just, you know.
Is it recycled, recirculated water?
It's the same as if you turn on a tap. It's not standing, it comes out, it drains, it doesn't continuously runs, it runs on sensors, so that when there's someone playing on it, it's. So that when there's someone playing on it, it's running. When there's no one playing on it, it's not.
My question then is, is it like turning on the tap so that the water you don't use goes down the drain, goes to the pump station, and, and is going to need treatment there?
Yeah, like any, like a water fountain, basically. Same basic principle.
I imagine it's going to have to be open and closed every day. It's going to have to be winterized at the end of the year, it's going to have to be opened up in the spring. And I imagine the water's going to have to be tested probably daily if not.
No, there's no standing water. There's no standing water at all.
The one in place does the exact same.
But I imagine the water's going to have to be treated and tested to make sure it's, it's, it's free from bacteria. And so the city will be paying that water bill?
Absolutely. Yes.
Then it's going to be tied in with doing Center Street too, right? I mean, if they can't, they're going to provide water flagged in from there. What I heard.
Well. But if we're getting supplies in August, I hope they're not still working on Center Street in August.
Oh, they won't, oh, yeah, for sure. They can wait out.
Well, one project isn't dependent on the other. If the, if the, if the water part, my understanding is the water part goes in, and then they're, they're at the point where they need to connect to the new water line, and the new water line is not in there, they'll have to wait. So that water line is installed, then the connection will take place. If the new water line is in, and then the, the splash pad goes in, the connection can be made whenever the splash pad contractor is ready, that's my understanding.
Can they run congruently? Can the, both of these projects run together in the event that these supplies arrive?
Try to coordinate the county, the city, and the splash pad contractors getting all this done at the same time.
They're all independent of each other. I believe we've established that. No, 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 I mean, can each of them individually and independently work on their project while the other one is operating? So no one has to wait until the other one is done? They can run congruently and be?
We don't want to dig Center Street up to put the water on, that's my point.
Yeah, exactly.
You know what?
Right, exactly.
Yeah. We want to bring it straight, yeah.
Okay, anyone else have any questions on item number eight? If not, we'll be on to item number nine. This ties into the medical situation from the fire department. Chief Fino requesting the ordinance transferring $7,000 from fire department's consulting fees, his portion of that budget. $2,000, I believe of that is to go to the consulting, or for, for rent writing fees in the remaining $5,000, I believe, to be applied towards the medical certification that was required for our fire department. Right Director Wolf?
Correct, you hit it.
Anyone have any questions on item number nine? Now moving on to item number 10, the city controller requests the council to pay the attached ordinance transferring funds for the emergency repair signals at South Park and Sharon Parkway and Abbott Road and, and Elmview Avenue. We had passed this legislation before, and Linda, you were just asking for the actual transfer of the funds, correct?
Yeah, we had to wait till we got the final bill on it before we made the task.
Anyone have any questions on that, that item? If not, we'll be on to item number 11, Amber Illick, board clerk, requesting the senior center for the Anabachi Court for school board elections. Anyone have any questions or issues on that? If not, then going to business registrations, Francesca Goodwin, D.V., Buffalo Clinical Lab at 2731 South Park Avenue. We all saw the approvals, I believe all the homework was done on that. Anyone have any questions on that item? And just to inform everyone, I'm going to move to entertainment licenses for the Porthouse Inc. and the Ice House across the street, off the table for possible passage to consideration in light of their written response outlining what remediation will take place to correct the problems and help address the numerous complaints and police contacts. So that's something for the rest of the council to consider. Uh, if, if not, then it is, almost it's nine minutes after seven. Unless there's anything pressing, what I'll do is I'll, I will formally call LeCoq on a city council meeting for March 27, 2023 to order, please rise for the flip.
The United States of America is a republic where it stands, a nation under God, in whose law we are, where we are just for all.
Thank you. City clerk, if you'd take the vote. Absolutely, Mr. Council President, Council, Muflae.
Present.
Anderson, here. Councilmember Moretti has been excused. Surlick?
Present.
Marano?
Here.
Department head, Waw?
Here.
Development?
Here.
Public Works has been excused. Public Safety?
Here.
Controller?
Here.
Recreation?
Here.
Public Information has been excused. Hearing from citizens who'd like to speak up, Captain.
Oh, thank you.
All right, with that, I need a motion for the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 13, 2023. All right, I move to adopt minutes of March 13, 2023. Ezra.
Second.
Motion by Marano, second by Surlick to adopt the minutes of the March 13, 2023 regular meeting of the city council is written. Muflae?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
340. Departmental reports one and two. Item moves receiving file department reports one and two. By Marano, second by Anderson, to receiving file departmental reports one and two. Muflae?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
340. Communications from Division Department Heads, number three. City Attorney requests the city council approve the attached contract between the city and the university emergency medical services. Full text of the contract is available on the city clerk's office. I move to approve request.
Complaint.
Motion by Marano, second by Muflae to approve request. Muflae?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
340. Number four, City Attorney requests the city council approve the attached ordinance authorizing the sale transfer of a 2.13 acre parcel at 2019 Abbott Road. Motion to, uh, receive and file Act on the Ordinance, please. Marano seconds. Motion by Surlick, second by Marano to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Muflae?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
340. The ordinance authorizing the sale transfer of property pursuant to municipal code chapter 12, the city council hereby approves the transfer of property known as part of vacant lot, sub lot number 151.08-10-1, North Fisher Properties LLC for the sum of $33,000. The purchaser or transferee shall be responsible for all expenses related to the transfer as set forth in chapter 12, section 11 of the city code. A lot of parties shall prepare documents to be executed for the transfer of the property, including an appropriate reversion clause. Motion to adopt ordinance is written. Marano seconds. Motion by Surlick, second by Marano to adopt ordinance is written. Muflae?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
340. Item number five, City Clerk, as per policy established by the city council on May 20 of 1991, all tabled items not acted upon within 90 days are deemed null and void and are to be re-submitted to the city council to receive, to be received and filed. I respectfully submit the following table items, the table agenda items over 90 days for council review, and that was from November 7, 2022. It was item number four from the assessor sale of 2019 Abbott Road to Jason Spira. I move to receive and file. Second. Motion by Marano, second by Surlick to receive and file. Muflae?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
340. Item number six, City Clerk requests the city council approve the hiring of Holly Anne Lower 53 Theresa Drive, LeCoq on, for the position of bingo inspector with an annual salary based on a per diem rate of $100 per inspection with a total number of inspections not to exceed 16 per year. Terms of appointments, appointment to expire December 31, 2026. I move to approve request. Second. Motion by Marano, second by Anderson to approve request. Muflae?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
340. Item number seven, Director of Recreation requests the city council approve the attached bid in the ward of 2023 grass cutting and landscaping bid to Snowplow Dr. 180 Lee High Street, LeCoq on, New York, 14218. The bid breakdown is as follows. First ward, $441 per cut. Second ward, $447 per cut. Third ward, $394 per cut. Fourth ward, $546 per cut. Adequate proof of insurance is attached. I move to approve request. Anderson seconds. Motion by Marano, second by Anderson to approve request. Muflae?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
340. Item number eight, the city controller requests the city council review the attached letter from the director of development and approve the attached ordinance funding the splash pad capital project. Marano moves to receive and file Act on the Ordinance. Anderson seconds. Motion by Marano, second by Anderson to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Muflae?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
Carry three to one. That ordinance amending the 2022-2023 budget ordinance adopted May 23, 2022 by adding $1,428,117.55 to the budget code for transfer to other fund capital and appropriating that same amount of the city's fund balance, creating the following account codes and allocating funds accordingly for the Splash Pad Capital Project. Breaks down Splash Pad City portion, $109,000 and change. Splash Pad for ESD Empire State Development, $374,111. Splash Pad DASNY Grant, $360,000. Splash Pad DASNY Grant, $260,000. Splash Pad CDVG, $325,000. And increasing the budget code for capital fund interfund transfers by $1,428,117.55. Marano moves to adopt ordinance is written.
I have a question, I have a question.
You got a second in order to get discussion? You could amend the, the motion at the table if you care to.
Yeah, I'd like to table this.
There's just too many questions on this.
Can we table it pending blueprint? We don't know what this thing is going to look like at least.
Pending further information.
Perfect.
So you guys want final design?
Well, there are a number of questions that we haven't really talked about. So what do you have, an amended motion by Jeffy taking? Yep, sorry. All right, so council president Marano initially made a motion for the ordinance as written. However, uh, that is going to be changed for tabling, and that, that motion is going to go to second ward council member Anderson, do I have a second?
Muflae seconds.
All right, so I've got a motion by Anderson, second by Muflae to table the ordinance pending further information. Muflae?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
340. Item number nine, city controller requests the city council review the attached email from Fire Chief James Fino and approve the attached ordinance transferring $7,000 into the fire department's consulting fees budget. I move to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Anderson seconds. Motion by Marano, second by Anderson to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Muflae?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
340. The ordinance amending the 2022-2023 budget ordinance adopted May 23, 2022 by transferring $7,000 from the budget code for training schools, fire department, into the budget code for fire department consulting fees. I move to adopt ordinance is written. Second. Motion by Marano, second by Surlick to adopt ordinance is written. Muflae?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
340. Number 10, city controller requests the city council approve the attached ordinance transferring funds for the emergency repair of traffic signals at A, South Park and Sharon Parkway, and B, Abbott Road and Elmwood Avenue. I move to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Second. Motion by Marano, second by Surlick to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Muflae?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
340. And that ordinance amending the 2022-2023 budget ordinance adopted May 23, 2022 by increasing the expenditure code, city garage repairs and replacements by $181,228.11 and the transfer unappropriated fund balance in the total amount of $181,228.11. I move to adopt ordinance is written. Second. Motion by Marano, second by Surlick to adopt ordinance is written. Muflae?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
340. Communications from citizens, number 11, Amber Illick, board clerk, LeCoq on, Board of Education. Request the city council approve the use of the senior Anabachi Court Building, senior center in Anabachi Court Building for the school board election to be held Tuesday, May 16, 2023, between the hours of 12 noon and 9 PM. Access to the venues is necessary. At 11 AM, the school district will pay the city $100 for the space being used. I move to approve request.
Muflae seconds.
Motion by Marano, second by Muflae to approve request. Muflae?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
340. Business registrations, Francesca Goodwin, doing business as Buffalo Clinical Lab, which is a full diagnostic lab, 2731 South Park Avenue. I move to approve business registration. Anderson seconds. Motion by Marano, second by Anderson to approve business registration. Muflae?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
340. Tabled items, I know the council president during caucus referenced pulling an item or two off the table. I move to, uh, take from the table the two applications for entertainment licenses for the businesses as known as the Porthouse and the Ice House for further action by this council on today's business. Second. I have a motion by Marano, a second by Surlick to remove the two items tabled at the regular meeting of March 13, 2023 regarding class one entertainment licenses for both the Porthouse and the Ice House. Muflae?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
They carry 40, so I'll need a motion to approve the entertainment license for the Porthouse Sports Bar, 2847 South Park, inclusive as long as they abide by the terms and conditions they have proposed in their letter to the council. I move that the, uh, the application for the entertainment license for the Porthouse, et cetera, et al, whatever, uh, be approved on the condition that the remediation, uh, that they recommended and that he indicated to the city that will take place is made part of that and conditioned, uh, as a part of that approval.
Just for the record, you do have the right to revoke the license at any time, just so you know.
Yeah, but then you have a hearing and everything, right?
We still got it. I think, I think you're going to approve it today. If they screw up, you're going to revoke it, and we're going to give them a hearing.
And, and just for the record, in both instances, they acknowledged there were problems, and, and they, they're taking steps to remediate it. And the fact that they want to be good neighbors is all we're asking, so.
Right.
I think that's great.
And, and Jeff, when you do approve it, if you could just note that if there's further problems, it will be revoked.
Very good. All right, so I have a motion by Marano, second by Anderson to approve the class one entertainment license for the Poorhouse Sports by our 2847 South Park as long as the remediation, the correct issues that were documented by this council are included in the licensing and made part of and contained or are conditioned in. In other words, they've got to abide by their own terms and conditions, and it will be made part of the entertainment license. Muflahe?
Yes.
Wait, was there a second for that?
Yes.
Yes, and I'm sorry. You're right, I didn't mention that. It was
I'm sorry.
It was seconded by Anderson.
Okay.
Muflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Surley?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
Carry four, zero. And then we have the second one for the Ice House Pub.
I'm, Marano moves to approve the entertainment license application for the Ice House Pub with the same stipulations as aforesaid in the prior application for the Poorhouse that become a condition and a material operating factor, the granting of a license.
Anderson seconds. I have a motion by Marano, second by Anderson to approve the class one entertainment license for the Ice House Pub on Ridge Road. Same language, as long as they abide by the terms and conditions, the remediation that they have proposed, and that that be made part of and conditioned as part of the granting of the entertainment license. And this council obviously holds the power to rescind that license if they're discretion. Muflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Surley?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
Carry four, zero. Mr. Council President.
Any other members of the council have any other items they wish to bring forward at this time or discuss? If not, Marano moves to adjourn. I'd like to adjourn this, today's meeting in, in the honor of, in the memory of Stanley Chipper Emigavich, very well-known family in Lackawanna for many, many years. And I believe Chipper was a member of the FBI and, and, also a pillar of our, our community. And he, his wife, I believe, was a Carol who, whose dad was a former judge in the city. So a very sad occasion, but I would